If I could call this meeting to order, ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and ask Ms. Marmian to lead us.
Hi, I'm right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then heading right into whimsy's pet presented by former first selectman Sherri Stenick. Ms. Stenick, the floor is literally yours.
Okay, this is Sean. He was picked up Friday and he's going to be available on Monday if nobody claims him.
A week from Monday.
A week from Monday, excuse me.
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, excuse me. I stand corrected. Sean, S-E-A-N, Sean. He's about five months old. He's a pup mix. We think maybe mixed with a little beagle. And he's not neutered. He's very friendly and chipper and he's ready to find a new home if no one comes for him. 211 North Rod Highway, the Fairfield Wolf Shelter, where he can play with his dogs and other friends.
Do we have a phone number?
254-4857.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, I should point out that Selectman Kylie literally texted me about a half hour ago, said that he is ill at home in bed, just came back from the doctors. He's got a sinus issue that is keeping him from being here today. And as we all know, there's a lot going on and going around. So besides staying safe on the roads, please stay safe at home there. I'm sure Kevin is at home watching this, so we will make sure we try and ask every question he would as we go through this. With that as an intro, first up are the minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of February 11th, 2015. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
And I will second that. Any discussion?
Can I talk, please?
Go ahead.
Sheila, I'd like to make amendment under item nine, instead of hazmat grants, I should say hazard mitigation grants.
Okay. I'd like to make an amendment that the town applied for 68, sorry, so is the number still about?
Yeah.
68 hazard mitigation grants on behalf of homeowners to prevent future damage for them by using the approved funding that will help homeowners elevate and make the home more flood resistant.
I will second that. Are you ready to vote on that amendment?
Yes.
All right. All in favor of the amendment to the minutes? Please signify by saying yes. Yes. The minutes as amended are before us. Any further changes to the minutes? All right, seeing none, are we ready to vote on the minutes as amended? All in favor? Aye. All right, that is the minutes from February 11th. Next up is to consider an act upon the minutes of the meeting of February 18th, 2015. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion on that? All right, are we ready to vote on those?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passed, that's the 18th. All right, next up, some information only items. Under resignation, from the Employees Retirement Board, Michael Mears, 44 Bay Edge Court, for a term of 11/13 to 11/18, has resigned effective February 19th, 2015. From the Parking Authority, Joanne Sheehan of 37 Verna Field Road, from a term of 11/11 to 11/16, has resigned effective March 1st. And from the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Jackie Coleman of 510 Barlow Road, for a term of 11/13 to 11/17, as an alternate, has resigned. For those of you that were watching along last week, Ms. Coleman was appointed to a full-time member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So in order to do that, she had to effectively resign her alternate seat. Next up, item six, first selectman appointments. To the Economic Development Commission, Kevin Lesko, Republican, 96 Woods End Road, for a term of 11/14 to 11/19, to fill a vacancy for Sally Ward, whose term expired. His appointment date is February 27th, 2015. This is a first selectman appointment, so it doesn't need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. But Mr. Lesko's here, and I want to thank you for stepping up the challenge. Would you like to say anything at the mic here and introduce yourself to anybody?
I can do that briefly.
All right. Just state your name.
Kevin Lesko, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for Selectmen, as well as Mark Barnard, and Don Peterson, and Peter Penzer, for bringing it to my attention and bringing me through and bringing me on board. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for stepping up. I know you and I had a chance to talk, please stay for a moment. You and I had a chance to talk briefly about some of the exciting things I see going on, and I really enjoyed our discussion, and I hope you can bring that same energy and excitement to the Economic Development Commission, because I think that's one of the next big growth areas for our town of Fairfield.
Thank you. I agree, and I look forward to that.
All right. Sheila, did you have anything to say?
No, you have terrific experience and thanks for your service, and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and good luck. All right, next up, appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. All right, Jen, we have to vote on this, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to hear, act, and consider on that. Next up to hear, act, and consider, an appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission, David Weber, 1654 North Benson Road, for a term of 11/14 to 11/19. Mr. Weber is filling a vacancy for Barbara Rifkin, who resigned in a previous term. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second that. Any discussion here?
No, I think Mr. Weber has terrific experience. He's a great volunteer, and I'm wondering if he has, perhaps you could just tell us if he sees any specific areas in Parks and Rec that he is excited to get involved in, or issues that are going to be coming up that he's excited about.
Oh, thank you, by the way, for this opportunity. Actually, I worked on the school board for six years. We dealt with Jerry Lombardo and a whole series of issues I look forward to, with Parks especially under his jurisdiction. The activities that he runs in town are terrific. I just want to keep that up, maintain it, you know, more than anything. And if there are areas where he needs special advice or help, I certainly look forward to that as well.
I would say it, you know, we try on different commissions, get a balance of background and experience, so we get different views and perspectives to represent our community. I think Mr. Weber brings a host of solid experience from your time on the Board of Ed to your involvement in town, and I think that is invaluable. We certainly have different representatives on the board that are involved in different types of sports programs. I think it's great to have somebody with a little bit of the school background to bring that in, and since a lot of the recreational opportunities actually use school facilities, I think it would help to have Mr. Weber's perspective in doing that. So again, thank you for being willing to be considered for this opportunity and helping out our town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Weber, and thank you. Next up, to hear, act, and consider, for the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Thomas Noonan, Republican, 91 Stonely Square, for a term of 11/13 to 11/17, as an alternate, to fill the vacancy for Jackie Coleman, who moved to be a full member. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second that. Any comments? More discussion?
No, again, great experience. Is Mr. Noonan here?
Yes.
Do you want to come up? I read the question there. Maybe you can expand upon it a little bit in terms of why you're specifically interested, or why Town Planning and Zoning, what about it interests you?
Sure. Again, my name, Tom Noonan. I am originally from Stratford, moved into Fairfield a few years ago. My wife Lauren and her family lifelong residents, so I've been excited to get into the, have the opportunity to get into local politics. I am an attorney, focused generally a lot on litigation, but I've had some experience with land use and real estate, and I just see this as a very interesting opportunity for me to get involved with not just the community, but also a little bit of the legal aspects as well, and try and serve the town along those lines.
Terrific. Thank you.
All right, and again, thank you. Planning and zoning was actually my introduction into elected office, and I started as an alternate.
Even better.
So be careful where that road leads.
I agree.
Could be more than you bargained for in that. But just as your objectives are, that's what I found, that was a great way to understand the town, how this town worked, see how land was used, see how those decisions were made. And you start to see the shape of the town and start to develop your own vision of it in that piece. So I know it was helpful in my work, and continues to be helpful as I look at how we do things here. So thank you very much for being interested to serve. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments here?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Noonan.
Thank you again.
Would you care to make any comments?
No, again, just looking forward to the experience and the opportunity. Again, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Here we are. Next up, from the Director of Information Technology, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Information Technology. And I think I am going to...
Need a way of reading?
No, I think I'm going to read this one, just to be clear on something. Whereas, the State of Connecticut grant funding from the Office of Policy and Management for regional, for the Regional Performance Incentive Program pursuant to CGS 4-124S for the Nutmeg Network Connection Program has been made available to the town of Fairfield. And whereas, said program provides grant funds in the approximate amount of $42,400 for purposes of network connection to the Nutmeg Network in order to expand Internet connection bandwidth, obtain Internet connection cost savings, and allow for the option to participate in future cooperative demonstration projects funded by OPM's Regional Performance Incentive Program. And whereas, there are no matching funds required and no hardware purchases required. And whereas, the application for grant funding does not bind the town of Fairfield to accept the grant award. The town of Fairfield may decline the notice of grant award without penalty. Be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Fairfield hereby endorses the town of Fairfield's application for inclusion in the State of Connecticut Nutmeg Network Initiative and Regional Performance Incentive Program. It is further resolved that the first selectman is authorized to act on this endorsement by signing all necessary agreements and to take all necessary actions related to this proposal to enter into a binding agreement with OPM according to the terms of the Regional Performance Incentive. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
A second. Now, before we get into the presentation, there have been some discussions going on, and just to be clear, there is what appears to be conflicting terms in this agreement. In the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, it says this application for funding does not bind the town. When you go to the final paragraph, it says this first selectman is authorized to act and sign all necessary agreements to this proposal to enter into a binding agreement with OPM. I would look for a motion to add in the word "non" before that, so that it reads into a non-binding agreement with OPM in the last sentence. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, let's see, in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, in the fifth paragraph of this resolution, to change the word "binding" to "non-binding" agreement with OPM.
I will second that. Any further discussion on that? All right. Any comments from the body? Back to the board, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. So the motion as amended is before us. Mr. Swift, if you'd introduce yourself and take us through a little bit of the presentation here. Thank you.
My name is Jim Swift. I'm the Library Systems Administrator here in Fairfield, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Don Leslie, who is applying for this grant. The top of this handout shows a summary of the costs. The top section shows what's included in the grant. Those are all one-time charges.
Now, when you say "top section," could you point to what page you're on and where you're talking?
Oh, sure, the first page of the document called Schedule of Payments for Nutmeg Network Connection at Fairfield Woods Library.
Okay.
And then it says included in the grant, and there's one-time and annual fees in there.
Okay, I've seen this a little bit. Sheila, are you okay with this?
So just walk, so when you say included in the, just walk me through it.
Sure.
When you say included in the grant, you're saying there's a one-time fee?
Right, there are connection charges from FiberTech, who's the company who actually owns the fiber network.
Okay.
And so the grant will pay them whatever their fee is to make that connection for us. It'll also pay the first year of maintenance to FiberTech, which is $1,500, which is a dollar. And then they're also going to give us $6,000 to buy any hardware we need to make this connection, regardless of how much that hardware costs.
Okay.
Okay, the next section down below that says the town cost, and it shows in year two what the town will be paying. The first year of maintenance is paid, there's a note number one at the bottom, that says the first year maintenance is paid by the grant. So in the first year when this is actually operational, if we get the grant and accept it, we'll only be paying the $2,858.40, which is the actual Internet connection cost. In subsequent years, that will add to that $1,500 to cover the annual maintenance to FiberTech.
So our total cost moving beyond, in year two, would be the $4,300?
That's correct.
Plus, okay.
Yes.
And then those fees would remain somewhat consistent, or they might go down, or we have it an unknown?
From what I've heard from people at UConn, in the last 12 years that they've done this program, the price has gone down every year for 11 years. The one year it didn't go down, it's remained the same. So as more municipalities join this network, the cost for each becomes lower. Sometimes it's a few cents a month, sometimes it's a couple dollars a month. The only change to that would be if our usage is far above 20 megabits, then they would change this agreement to be whatever we're using. So if we're using more or less than that, we would pay more or less according to how much we're actually using. So the first year, basically, you can pay for what you think you'll use, and then after that, they'll assess what you've actually used.
Okay. Okay, you can keep going. I have lots of questions, but we'll get to the...
Okay. The next section below that talks about costs going forward. So in the current year, we're paying approximately $42,000 for two Internet connections, one here at Town Hall, and one at the Fairfield Woods Branch Library. We will keep those for now, because we have a contract with ChimeNet to keep those until June of 2016, at which time we'll be negotiating with them. In the first year of this, once the grant is approved and we've accepted it, and they've actually done the fiber build-out, it's probably going to be about a year from right now. At that point, we'll start utilizing the new connection, testing it to make sure it's reliable, and if things look good, then in fiscal year 17, we will drop the connection at the library and use this as our sole connection.
Therefore, saving twice...
$21,000.
$21,000 in one year?
Right, exactly.
Okay. And for years moving forward?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And as long as that works out, and the town can then take the next year to migrate all of its connections away from that other connection, then in the future, we'll be saving $42,000. So actually, the total savings will be about $38,000 a year if you take the difference between what we're paying now versus this, right?
I see. Wow.
Yes.
Can I ask you?
Yeah, absolutely.
So how many towns are currently a part of the Nutmeg Network?
Towns themselves, I think there's 50 or 60. I haven't checked the newest numbers on that, and I know a lot more applied this year. As far as, the Nutmeg Network is actually is a newer version of the network. The old network's called the CEN, the Connecticut Education Network, and they've been giving out free Internet to libraries and school systems within the town for probably 10 years now. The library's been using the Board of Education connection for the past six to eight years. It's worked out well. We've had some problems with power at the Board of Ed building, so when that happens, we lose our connection too. But other than that, the network's been very stable and reliable, so it's really just for us finding a new way to connect to it.
Jim, if you would, you have miscellaneous hardware on here for $6,000?
Yes.
You say that's the amount of money we'll get as part of the grant to pay for that hardware?
Right.
How do we know that is enough to pay for the hardware we need?
Good question. It depends on how many connections you're going to have and what kind of switch you actually need. We could get a switch or a small piece of equipment for probably $3,000 that would cover it for us. We might want to get something a little more robust that might last a little longer. So at the time when the grant is awarded, we will investigate what hardware is available at that time, and then make the best recommendation.
Okay, what's the probability that $6,000 will cover that?
It will definitely cover whatever we need for us. We're going to need basically a total of three connections, one to their network, and then actually be two to start with, so it'll be more than enough.
Okay, is there some documentation, or will there be some documentation?
I don't have any quotes now, because there will be once we get the grant.
That supports that?
Right.
Because as I understand, this is step one, which we're really basically getting approval to apply.
Right.
Step two will be, if we get approved, some other documentation will flow back through both this board, as well as most likely the Board of Finance and RTM, because we will have to spend some money in terms of matching this up?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have any estimate as to how much money we'd have to expend when it comes back through, or we get approval for the entire?
We will get approval for the whole thing. Basically, if you apply and put in all the stuff on time, you're approved for this grant. It's not something where they sit there and pick and choose who's going to get it. If you apply, you get it.
Will there be any other costs other than those that are associated here?
Not as far as I'm aware, no. It'll be the annual maintenance of FiberTech for the connection, plus the bandwidth connection, the Internet provider connection to the state, which is the $2,800. And everything else is a one-time thing that the grant covers.
Okay, of the, again, of the, the cost going forward, the new Internet at Fairfield Woods, there's dollar amounts listed for '16, '17, '18, '19. Which one of those are covered by the grants?
Of what you're talking about, that top line, the new Internet at Fairfield Woods, none of that is covered by the grant. That is what the town will be paying.
So those are new costs that will incur?
That's correct.
And because of the overlap of ChimeNet closing down, we'll have $2,800 and change that we'll have to pay for one year while we have both ChimeNet connections.
Right.
And then the following year, $21,400 drops out.
Mm-hmm.
So that makes it easy on that side.
Yes.
The year after that, the other $21,000 drops out.
Correct.
So at some point, we're saving a net of $38,000, but in the short term, in the transition, we'll need almost $2,800 and change, or almost $3,000...
That's correct.
...of additional funding to kind of fund that transition.
Correct.
Assuming we get the equipment we need for $6,000 or less, we won't have any additional funding involved in the system.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe Donald Leslie has actually already budgeted $3,000 to cover that for next year.
Okay, so that's in the budget that's being approved this spring?
Yes, that's correct.
Gotcha. Sorry.
Do we have any feedback from the other towns that are using the Nutmeg connection in terms of how it's working for them?
I personally have not spoke with anyone from any other towns. Having used the CEN portion of this network for many years, found it to be extremely reliable. The few times where there were problems, it was quickly resolved. So I think it's only this, really about a year that people in municipalities have been actually using this network.
Okay.
So it's really relatively pretty new.
And just to go back to what you said before, pretty much everybody who applies, every municipality who applies for this grant gets the grant?
It's approved. That's what I was told, yes. As long as you get everything signed and documented and sent in before the deadlines, you get it.
Okay.
And when is the deadline?
March 31st for this final resolution.
May I?
Just looking at downsides that you can think of? Any Achilles' heels that we need to be concerned about?
Unless something happens to Fairfield University where the connection is, I can't see any.
Okay.
The only other thing would be if the branch renovation, branch building is renovated at some point, we would need to maintain that connection somehow. But other than that, I don't think it would be a problem, and I don't see that happening in the foreseeable future, so.
Okay. Just to be clear, this connection is going into Fairfield Woods Branch Library?
Right.
Okay, so Fairfield University...
Fairfield University is what they call the CEN POP, the Point of Presence for the CEN network. So there's two in this town. One is the Board of Education on King's Highway, which is where the library currently gets their Internet connection from, or part of it, I should say. And Fairfield University is the other CEN connection in town, the other state connection in town to that network. So we can cut to either one, they don't care which one we connect to. Because the town has a fiber network that connects Town Hall through the main library to the branch, then that satisfies the requirements of the grant, so.
Okay. The documentation here describes the library will no longer be dependent on the BOE connection, which has been troublesome over the years. You seem to say that CEN connection has been solid. Can you explain the...
Certainly. The CEN itself has, as far as I know, for us, never really gone down. There was one time, I think, three years ago, where there was a virus outbreak at another municipality, another school system, and so they kind of shut things down for a little while, so they figured out where it was coming from, and then segregated that part of the traffic. Really, it comes down to whether there's a power outage at the Board of Education, or flooding, or something like that, where they have problems with their building. Occasionally, they'll do maintenance when their day is over at 4:00, and we're open at the library until 9:00, so we lose our connection, or it gets extremely slow for a few hours. So those are the problems that we've had over the years. But it's not actually the CEN network itself, it's us getting to the CEN through the Board of Ed.
Okay. So if I were to look for the benefits of this, one is after we spend roughly $3,000, we save $38,000 a year.
That's correct.
What's the, okay, so that financially says that kind of works.
Right.
What's the functional rationale for that? What do we get out of this?
Functionally...
Do we get faster, does my computer in my office work faster if I'm a town employee?
Your computer won't necessarily work any faster, but your Internet connection will be faster. The advantage is that in the future, they plan to expand the network to offer other services that are yet to be determined. So if we do this, we'll be poised to utilize those connections. One of them is like a disaster recovery site, so another town might agree with us to be each other's disaster backup site or something like that, so we can house each other's data and that kind of thing. But a lot of things you can do with it when the network gets this fast, but it's just a question of who's on it and what agreements come out of it later.
Okay. Will this help the library response time at the library? Will they have a faster interconnection also?
Yes.
Okay. The school system won't be on this at all?
That's correct. They'll remain with the connection they have now, if they're already on the network themselves.
Okay, so in essence, they won't see any change other than our workload will be off of their network?
Right, right. They won't have to worry about the library being open until 9:00 at night when they close at 4:00 and want to do maintenance, so it'll be easier for them, too.
Okay. All right. Any further comments?
No.
All right, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the item as amended before us?
Yes.
All right. All right. All in favor? All right. Jim, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's hope Mr. Leslie is feeling better.
Yes.
All right. Next up is the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee to hear a report from the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee. Who is going to present to us? Mr. Donald?
Good evening. Once again, Mark Donald, the chairman of the Fairfield Ludlow Building Committee.
Thank you for joining us today.
Pleasure, as always. As requested from a couple of weeks ago, wanted some updates and wanted some specifics on what was driving the cost increase. I think just for the public to reiterate, the construction was divided into three phases for purposes of bidding as well as for going through certain approvals. Phase one is the roof. Phase two is...
Are you just talking, are there any pages here that you're stepping into?
I'm not, no, I'm not walking through that. I was just giving a quick summary for the public once again. Phase two is the addition to the, to the classroom addition to the Webster Wing as well as the cafeteria addition. And then phase three is the windows. So the initial, I think, item that you requested was what is driving the cost increase. And, you know, we discussed at the last meeting, some of the soft costs were not included in this, the, excuse me, in the original estimate, the Silver Petroselli estimate. Also, while the escalation was noted on the Silver Petroselli report, it was not included within the budget estimate of 11.6.
Okay, are those points listed somewhere?
They are in each, in the documents themselves. I was just giving an overview and then I was going to go through each document unless you prefer I dive right into it, which I'm happy to do.
No, I just, I just, the points you were making, I think, are very relevant.
Okay.
And I was looking for just a summary of those points somewhere. And I was hoping it might be in here.
Okay. It's more listed within, in the detail of the documents?
All right. Then I don't mean to interrupt you. Please proceed.
Okay. So I'll get right to it. Excuse me. I think, you know, the initial, as is noted in the cover letter, we, the building committee began in August of 2013. And we were presented, we selected an architect in January of 2014 along with the construction manager and the owner's rep. In March of 2014, we were presented with six different options to choose from. The three of them were similar to the initial plan submitted by Silver Petroselli in adding it to the courtyard. This is attachment 1A that I'm referring to. The three of the options were in the Webster Wing addition. And in order to, and this is with consultation, of course, with all the stakeholders involved, the principal, the students, staff members, faculty, as well as keeping in mind the aggressive construction schedule to make sure we have students in chairs in September of 2015, we selected what is noted as option number two. And that's the Webster addition.
And that's the one that's listed here at 11.8?
Yes. That came in at 11.8, $11.8 million, which the initial Silver Petroselli budget was $11.6 million. So it was within, within 2% of that budget range. The one thing to note is within that 11.8 million dollar number, we already began including the soft costs, some of the soft cost escalations. And that number in particular, the difference in the Silver Petroselli report as well as the, I'm sorry.
That's so much better.
I'll give you a minute to catch where we...
Now, just for the record, these are not, this isn't new information, if I understand it correctly?
No.
It's just a larger print size for those of us that are approaching seniorhood.
It's more user-friendly.
Yes, thank you.
While you're getting your place, I'm going to grab my pen to make some...
Wasn't this tough when I was a senior in high school?
So where I was just, the point I was referencing would be the option two Webster addition versus the Silver Petroselli estimate on the conceptual phase. And you see under the, under the 5.8 line, subtotal soft cost right there, $600,000, just to note that.
I'm sorry, if you could point to where we are on the sheet and where you referenced that?
Right there, soft costs.
Under 5.8, just the subtotal, the soft cost.
There's 1.?
1.2 on the initial estimate on the conceptual. And Silver Petroselli was 600,000. I just wanted to note that for future.
Okay, forgive me. I'm looking at this. And where's the 600,000?
Under the Silver Petroselli subtotal soft cost.
Okay, where's the?
Under 5.8 on soft costs.
Okay. I don't see anything on this sheet that relates to that.
Mr. Tatchell?
Attachment 1B.
Is it more visible on?
Where's attachment 1B? I'm looking at attachment 1A.
Okay, that, actually, that's
That's here, that's right here.
A little more, that's the next one.
Two forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Okay, just step us through the form here so we know where to look, if you would, please.
Okay, so on attachment 1B, the column on the left is the Silver Petroselli?
No.
This is the estimate side by side at the conceptual phase.
All right, good.
And what I was just alluding to on attachment 1A is under the soft cost, which is actually listed at two on the bottom half of the page. You see the subtotal, the soft cost for the Silver Petroselli is $604,737.50. In the newest estimate for the Webster Wing, it was 1.233.
Okay. Can you take us through what the differences were?
Well, the, and I'll get into more detail of this, the total on the Silver Petroselli for the, the soft cost for the architect, the construction manager, and the owner's rep was 463,737,000. The, and it's broken out. And then you see under the column for the Webster Wing, the architect, the schematic design fee was 120,000. The architect and engineering design bid was 456,000. And then the owner's rep fee was 405,000. And then it breaks down the, the actual cost. The environmental went up approximately $60,000. Item 22, and the rest are equivalent.
Okay.
Any questions about that part so far?
If you're talking just the soft cost, that's straight, if you're talking that, is that all?
Well, I just was pointing that out because I'll get more to that as we get to the final, the numbers that we have now for the GMP. So the overall...
So as much as that was dramatically higher for soft costs, everything else came in dramatically lower in order to finish at 11.8 versus 11.6, right?
Right.
So we're looking at one, new construction renovation came in lower, windows came in much lower, roof came in lower, subtotal construction, we only have one number, we don't have a comparison number for that. Is there a comparison number? Am I just missing that?
For the subtotal for the construction?
Well, I'm looking at a 1411 number, and I'm trying to find something to compare that to.
For the Silver Petroselli, there's nothing.
Right here. There's a 1411 number right there. Trying to find out what I compare that number to.
Can you point that out again, please?
Right here, just above soft cost.
Okay.
There's a 1411665.
Oh, okay.
I was looking for what to compare that to.
Hi, that's part, Sal Morvito?
Thank you.
Board of Education. Part of the challenge is that the SPA, the Silver Petroselli budget was started in a different format. So the note that you're seeing on the left-hand column says included in items 1, 2, and 3 and 5.2, it was distributed elsewhere in the budget. So there isn't a comparable number
Gotcha.
for that item the way that Perkins Eastman and Gilbane are estimating it. So this is the best way to try to put it side by side. It exists. It was just elsewhere in the Silver Petroselli budget.
Okay. So if I look at this, and the soft costs are off by roughly $600,000 on at the, let's see, the second one. What are we calling the second one? SPA Silver, Silver Petroselli? That's the original estimate?
That was the estimate that was the basis of funding, yes.
Okay, what are we calling the 32614 estimate?
That is the conceptual estimate for the Webster Wing design that was chosen by the building committee.
So the Webster Wing, okay, so the Webster Wing design is $600,000 higher in soft costs. And effectively, when you net all this out, $400,000 lower than everything else in order to come in just $200,000 higher.
Correct.
Okay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, sorry.
No problem. Okay, any other questions about where we are at that point?
Not at the moment.
Okay, so the next attachment is the construction schedule. And again, because of the timeline with EPA approval, we thought it prudent to separate the window as phase, as just phase three. The roof was pretty straightforward in regards to design and construction. So we separated that as phase one. And then the construction and addition was, is phase two, simply because it's a little bit more detailed in terms of design and approvals, but not quite as, as difficult to get through the parties as phase three. So we threw, to get, again, in order to protect the asset, the roof was straightforward and is on schedule currently to be completed at the end of the summer. Phase two with the classroom and the addition, and also to meet the change of schedule that was passed by the Board of Education as well as the increasing enrollment, that is also on schedule to be completed in, in August of 2015.
But you said the change of schedule that was passed by the Board of Education?
The high school, the Board of Education passed a change of schedule to facilitate instructional time to ensure that all students have the opportunity to take lunch.
Okay, so this, not change of construction schedule?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Change of dealing schedule?
Change of education schedule. And I will defer to Mr. Hatsis if there are any specifics on that. And to date, we are still going back and forth with EPA trying to get final approval on that. We began that process in June of 2014.
And I'm sorry, on the classrooms and the cafeteria?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You mentioned the classroom, the classrooms are on schedule for the end of August. Also the cafeteria?
Yes, I'm sorry, both. Yeah, phases one and two should essentially be complete by August 2015 in order for students to be in classes.
But you're going back and forth with the EPA?
On, on the windows, which is phase three.
On the windows, thank you.
And as we discussed at the last meeting, the lead time with windows construction, et cetera, just to make it feasible to try and push that through this summer. By the time the anticipated or when the EPA approval is starting that date, it's 20 weeks to get windows manufactured.
And I'm assuming you would save costs. You're going to have everybody on site anyway. You don't want people to go away and come back, you know, three months later with the windows installation, correct?
Right. And it's a different mobilization process, right? Yes, it's a different process altogether.
Do you anticipate any, I mean, I know you can't predict, but are you concerned about staying with that schedule?
I think that that gives us generous time right now because we won't go out to bid until the fall for the window project. So that builds in time to continue finalizing the remediation and abatement plan. And once that's complete, we'll have a lot harder, kind of more fixed idea on the estimates and then go out to get bid and get final numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be the scheduling. Should, would you like me to review where we are on the construction? We did do that two weeks ago. Construction started and on schedule and those to that.
Okay.
Again, the roof is being, is going to start in June. Everything's anticipated to be complete.
Assuming it stops snowing by then?
No comments, says the guy from the south. Okay, so our next part would be the, just the overall budget tracking and going from design development and the different numbers that we have seen over the course of the lifetime. This would be attachment number three. So as referenced to the prior attachment, the March 26th, 2014, that was the initial conceptual estimate of the Webster Wing. And that total was 11.8 million dollars. And as you see through the life of the project, it's gone through further refinement and design development. We've done some value engineering, overtaking the construction costs. The roof essentially stayed within range. And the, the windows, of course, since knowns are still not as, not as many as we would like, it's still fluctuating. And then as we get to the next attachment, we'll see a range of a best-case scenario and a worst-case scenario that we're hoping.
Are you going to take us through this?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. So the design development, which went through on, on June 2nd, and we're just refining more of the documents, getting deeper into the design. I'm just looking at my notes here. So, excuse me. So for the design and, and the increase in the construction, the cafeteria increased by approximately 900 square feet. So some of the construction costs went up there. You'll see the, the initial line.
You've got to, somehow you've got to reference where you are.
Yes.
Having trouble, these are nice and big, colorful, laid out very well. I'm just having trouble following where we are.
Got it.
Don't mean to be critical of you.
So the number that sticks out most is when, as we're going from right to left, on the new construction slash renovation, the number was 3,665,000 at 326. And it jumped up to $6,120,000. Some of the drivers on that were, the structural design was a little more complex. The steel and concrete packages had increased, excuse me, the cafeteria square footage had increased by 900 square feet. The complexity of the cafeteria construction had also increased. The classroom square footage had increased 700 square feet. And the exterior of the Webster Wing addition was also more, more complex on the design. And also, there was no site work shown on the conceptual design. The design was much more detailed and landscape than the hardscape and is in excess of what was assumed after further analysis.
So I've got to ask, on June 2nd of 2014, we went from $4,579,000 to $7,617,000. That's a 75% increase on just that phase. What did we do at that point? I mean, that's huge. That took the whole project from 11.8 to 14.9. That blew everything out of the water. Can you take us through, frankly, each of these and explain why we went ahead at this point if it's that much more expensive and that much further over the budget?
Well, this was the first round of design documents. And we were confident that with some value engineering and bringing things more in line as we further refined the design and made some decisions, we could, we could reduce some costs. And I'll walk you through some of those decisions as we went on.
Right. Well, to do that, though, I mean, one of the, here's, here's the problem. One of the, one of the issues out there and one of the topics, just to get it out on the table, is that frankly, the architect that was chosen threw away the Silver Petroselli design, went with something much more expensive, and we didn't stand a chance of coming in within budget. That's one of the things I'm hearing out there. Can somebody take us Can somebody take us through each of these items, explain why we didn't use the Silver Petricelli design, why these things were so much more expensive? Because it looked like we got blown out of the water right on day one, and we haven't recovered.
Well, I, I think the, the main point of, of, to begin with, is based on the conceptual design numbers, the, the two designs were within 2%. So, they're within, the Webster Wing addition was within $200,000. I think also, as, as we'll get into, there were a lot of costs that weren't assumed straight away, the, the soft costs that I've alluded to, as well as the escalation. So, straight away, those are some two things that bring, bring the numbers right back in line.
Okay. You're gonna have to help out on the soft costs?
Okay.
Because if I understood what you described up front?
Mm-hmm.
The soft costs were more expensive, but everything else was less expensive, so we ended up back in the same place from when we originally started.
Right.
Right? Because 11-6 to 11-8 is where we started. We're looking at 11-8 here as a starting point, which is reasonable. But now we go 90 days later, we're 75% higher on this phase, 75% off. It's like huge.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm like, where's the stop the presses, we gotta rethink this, what's going on step here? I mean, that's like saying it cost twice as much. Help, help us understand. I guess as a start, we've said structural design, steel design, square foot for the cafeteria, complexity, classroom square footage, exterior. Why are these things all higher than the original design?
Right. I was gonna ask the same question. I don't remember that discussion in terms of increasing the cafeteria size and increasing the square footage of the classroom size. Maybe I missed something along the way in the dialogue that was going on.
And, and if I might, just help focus the discussion?
Yeah.
You've listed one, two, three, four, five, six drivers. Can you take us through each of those one at a time? Explain what changed and what drove this dramatic difference? Because these, these, these numbers are just huge.
Yes. And I understand that. And I think as, with any, if we had stuck with the initial design, as you go in with the, the design development, you're gonna find out much more in terms of what you're looking at. Many of the costs, I would imagine, would probably parallel in terms of, of rising. But in this situation, we, as, as we refined the design, some of the, the costs I listed were, were increased. And again, it's a conceptual estimate, so you don't have near the detail that you do as, at the beginning in March.
Yep. That, that I understand.
Okay.
Conceptually.
Yeah.
So, my question is specifically, how much of each of these components drove that $3,000,000, 75% increase? How much did 900 square feet in the cafeteria? How much did 900 square feet in the classrooms? What, what did each of these things drive? And what drove the extra square footage in the cafeteria? What drove the extra square footage in the classroom that exceeded budget?
Mr. Manning? Mr. Manning is Gilbain?
My name is Peter Manning, Gilbain Building Company. Just a couple of clarifications. The initial conceptual budget was really derived by using comparative, comparative budgets from other jobs that we've built in the past. One of them right down the road, Riverfield. The budget numbers from there, but also Thompson High School and Bolton High School. So, we develop a cost per square foot. At the conceptual stage, basically, all we have is a floor plan, and we're using the cost per square foot numbers to assign those values to, to the project. Once we get into the design development, all of the detail is, is available. Structural details, sections, you know, cross-sections, elevations, and, and we're able to estimate the actual components of the building as opposed to making a broad brush comparison to other comparative, comparative projects. To answer your question with regard to, and, and I'm going from memory because I don't have it all in front of me, but from a square foot standpoint, I would say 500,000 to 600,000 dollars, just based on the additional square footage of the original program in the concept drawings to the design development. Site work, there was very little information in site work during conceptual. We probably had a 400 to 500,000 dollar increase in site work, and between the structural and the, and the structural steel and concrete, probably 300 or 400,000 dollars. So, it's, it's hard to tell just because we're really using square foot numbers of, of the whole system as opposed to an estimate at that concept level. So, that, you know, explains the, the increase between the concept estimate and the design development.
Okay. One, at least, not for me, actually. I don't know how you feel on that, but why did we increase the size of the cafeteria? And it increased by 900 square feet? And what's that as a percentage of what it was to what it is?
Right. I'd, I'd be looking for some sort of rationale for why that decision was made, because I remember when I was on the RTM, people really discussing the cafeteria and, you know, trying to understand why do we need, you know, and there was some good rationale there then in terms of planning the flow of the kids and the number of kids in the lunchroom at, at one time. So, that was explained to us, but, you know, that's a lot of, that's, that's a huge increase, and I don't remember having any further discussion in terms of the rationale for why that would need to grow by that percentage.
I defer that back to, to Mark.
You might, if I address, address that. Good evening. I'm Joe Costin, a principal with Perkins Eastman. I think I can address the 900 square foot. From conceptual to design development, design development included actual furniture placement. We had sort of a very small diagram showing the furniture at conceptual, but until we actually created a, a more accurate drawing and actually placed both rectilinear and circular tables, along with the proper clearances, accessibility issues, that drove the square footage. Subsequent to that, after June, we went back and did some redesign, and we actually pulled the square footage of the cafeteria back by doing some changes to the overall plan. So, at, at, at design development, it was a little bit bigger, and then subsequently it shrunk back down to almost what the conceptual design was. So, there was, you know, there was some adjustment and some movements associated with refinements, figuring out the structural depth, making sure that we had, you know, 520 seats, that we had enough space for accessibility, things like that. So, it, it did, it did change a little bit, and then it went back to a smaller square footage.
So, can you, you mentioned that the number of seats. Did the number of seats in the cafeteria increase? What was it?
No. No. How you place, well, yeah, what happened was.
Furniture, existing furniture, new furniture?
The simple, the simple answer was, at design development, we were not counting the student lounge area for part of our seating count. We subsequently redesigned, removed the student lounge area, and then counted some of the seats as part of our overall capacity of the room. That's how that, that actually occurred.
So, wait, I have another question. So, because I remember the student lounge discussion as well, where people were saying, you know, do we really need this, et cetera? So, you're saying that the student lounge went away and it became the cafeteria?
No. What happened was, the original student lounge was actually an enclosed room, and it was, it was specifically for lounging, not necessarily for lunch-taking. And then we went back, had conversations with administrators and say, well, why can't we use the seating and the table capacity that's inherent in that space, the lounge space, as part of our cafeteria count? And ultimately, that was something that was okayed and found to be acceptable, and that allowed us to reduce the overall size of the cafeteria by, in essence, the, the lounge area. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. How about using some numbers? How many square feet are in a 326 design?
How many square feet in a 326 design? Which part of it? The cafeteria?
Whatever part increased by 900 square feet. I'm trying to figure out how big it grew.
Let me, let me, let me check. I don't have all of the numbers at my fingertips, just there was.
That's okay.
Quite, quite a few different options.
It's only a $3 million difference?
Hold on a second. If you'll just bear with me for a moment.
Take your time.
Apologize for that.
Take your time.
Okay. What I, for option six, well, option for the cafeteria, I, I had a number on the sheet of paper. It was 3,465 gross square foot.
3,000?
That would, that would be the addition. 3,465 gross square feet for the cafeteria addition.
Okay. So, we're saying then, when we added 900 square feet, it went from 3, 3,400 to 4,300?
No, that's the reduced, that would be the reduced number.
Okay. Let me try this again. On 326, we had a design for the cafeteria. We said it increased by 900 square feet. That's one of the drivers for our increase. I want to know how, what percent that 900 square feet is of the total cafeteria?
Let me tell you. Let me, let me check.
Okay. I'm sorry. Does this make sense to you?
I'm trying to figure it out. I'm not, I don't understand why the 900 square, you know, anyway.
What are you, what are you, all the way done? You go from 6-1 to 5-9.
Yeah.
So, I'm just trying to figure out, how would you put 300, 3 million? And why we didn't stop the presses there and go back?
I don't.
I'm sorry. It was, the addition was 2,600, and then it went to that 3,465 number that I just gave you.
Okay. What drove the 900 square feet? Why did it go from 2,600 to 3,400?
Because of the way the lounge was configured, the fact that, that we, we weren't using the lounge, and now we were using the lounge. That, that was, that was a linchpin.
Okay. What's the cost of 900 square feet?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay. Is there anybody who can tell us that?
Yes.
If you'd take the mic, please.
Peter Manning, again, from Gilbain. Our estimate was about $277 a square foot. So, 277 times the 900, the, the total additional square footage for both the cafeteria and the Webster Wing came to about $500,000.
So, we're saying it costs almost $300 a square foot?
Yes.
To put, times 900?
Yes.
In the cafeteria?
Right.
Okay. Forgive me. $300 a square foot was kind of the number in residential construction you'd use to build a 3, $3 million house. Does, um, um, our cafeteria for 900 additional square feet cost $300 per square foot?
The, the comparative numbers from other projects tell us that. Yes.
Wow.
Right now, we're, we're building Riverfield. The actual bid numbers on the Riverfield project is somewhere around $200 a foot. A lot of that is interior renovation. So, it's a little bit skewed. So, the new construction is probably about 300 bucks a foot. The renovation is probably about 100 bucks a foot. But the, the $300 a square foot was basically derived from comps from different schools, escalated to today's rates.
Yeah. My concern is the cafeteria is basically building a box, an open space. There's minimal walls, minimum structural things. So, to basically build out all that airspace costs $300 a square foot.
At the conceptual level of the estimate, that's what we used.
Okay. And same for the classrooms?
Uh, yeah.
So, that's 270,000. The classroom, also $300 a square foot?
Yeah. Close to 300.
Was that 900 square feet also?
Yes.
Okay. Can somebody explain why the classrooms went up 900 square feet?
What I would assume, it was driven by the design documents and the need to, to ensure that the student, the student classes were set per spec and by the design team. Mr. Costa, do you?
Maybe the, but is, can we hear from the Board of Ed? Was there something in the Ed spec in terms of classroom labs, something like that? Equipment?
It had to do.
Nothing?
I'm going back a whole year, and, you know, there were nine different options or something like that. I think it had to do with the configuration of the space.
Yeah. Just, just to be clear, we've scheduled this several times. We've asked for this detail several times. If you're not prepared for this, we're happy to reschedule it again. I don't want to waste your time, and I don't want to waste ours.
I'll, I'll explain as best as I know. The original design.
I mean, seriously, if you're not ready for this, we can rebook this, because I don't want to waste your time, and I don't want to waste ours.
Well, it's, it's not up to me. It's up to the chairman.
No, it's actually up to me as first selectman. If you're not ready for this meeting, we will rebook this.
Fine.
Okay. Are you saying you guys aren't ready? How many weeks notice do we have to give you to get an update on numbers that are a year old?
Well, I think if we're talking about numbers that are a year old, that have, that have changed multiple times, that we're talking about increasing 700 square feet, and then we've made other changes to the, to the design, then can I come back to you on that, or can we keep moving and I can explain more in more detail?
Well, I gotta tell you, my first reaction is when we jump a 75% number, and there's not, what you just added up was 540,000. There's 2.5 million dollars that's in structural design, steel design, complexity and exterior, whatever that is. When we're done, a year later, we went from 6-1 to 5-9. So, I guess sooner or later, you're gonna have to explain why we went from 3.6 to 5.9. So, however you want to take that.
Okay. So, I think we.
If that's okay with you.
We continue moving forward with the timeline is the best way to do it. And then if you have further questions we can't answer, we can come back. The best way to do it, though, I believe, is to continue. So, over the, the time, you see some various value engineering.
And again, I apologize if I'm getting upset here, guys, but this is 75% over on a school project. We were told, we were sold that Silver Petricelli did a design that was gonna save us, and the fact that we could get this done with an 11.6 million dollar budget, and to have the first revamp of this come out, $3 million over, 75% over on a phase, all right? And not to have somebody say, here's what's going on, and not to be very clear on why that's going on, that doesn't demonstrate that we went through a very thorough review at that time to explain it. So, we were sold one thing. The Board of Finance was sold one thing. The Board of Selectmen was sold one thing, or RTM was sold one thing, and we're not seeing.
And who did, who did the selling? If, if I might.
Yep. So, I, my question is, do we need to get Silver Petricelli in here with you guys to see what's going on?
I, I don't think so, because I think it's very clear as the presentation goes on, explaining where these cost drivers are. And one of the, the design and the function of this committee is we were given a pot of money that was not adequate for the budget, which we had discussed through the life of this project. If we, if we go just on the basis, I'll skip ahead in, in my presentation. I believe it's outlined on. Let me just find my. I don't think I have side-by-side in front of me, but we talked about the major cost drivers, okay? So, you know, we'll start with the soft costs, since that seems to be a, a big difference. So, the soft costs alone that were not included, or the difference in the Silver Petricelli, the Silver Petricelli is 463,737 dollars.
Could, if I could, could you show us where on that soft costs are? Because the only soft costs under that. costs under that?
But we don't have details here. You're on, are you on 1B?
You're going to add up, you're going to tell us where the $600,000 are?
I'm sorry?
I just, just tell me kind of where we are, so we can follow along.
Okay, so, if you actually... I'm just trying to see if we need to look at two together, since we're talking final numbers here.
I mean, what 1B does is basically show us that the EPA number and the Gilbain number is about the same, is that a fair statement?
Right, but if you look at the Silver Petricelli
Mm-hmm.
...numbers, and trying to find the soft costs on the final, do you know what the soft costs on the final budget off the top line? Okay, so... Okay, thank you, so if we look at this, on attachment three, this number right here.
1.4?
1.446.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at the Silver Petricelli this number right here, 604,000, right there, we're talking 850,000 difference, so if we... Okay, so, right there, we're talking a 12, 12,500, 500,000 project based on that alone. Additionally, in the Silver Petricelli report, there is a note saying this does not include 5% escalation costs, that report was done in January of 2013, right now, we're at March of 2015, so that's 5% over two years, for argument's sake, we could say that's 1.1 million dollars, unless you have a mathematical mind that can come quicker on that one. Okay, so right there, those two cost drivers, we're talking 2 million dollars on those two alone, additionally, the windows, you know, where, where that goes, nobody knows, we're still going back and forth with EPA, there's questions about how much abatement we can do, how much encapsulation we can do, and so, when we look at that final number on attachment four, that's why we have the two numbers there.
I don't think we've caught up to attachment four yet.
So, going back to the cost driver question, we don't have to go there yet, we can get there, so within those two costs alone, as I said, there's, there's 2 million right there.
So, you're trying to give us a sense that the number for the windows is a moving target?
It is a moving target.
We just really don't know, it could be through the roof, literally, or, and we're not going to know that until, do we have, until we do more, get through Phase Two, more Phase Two?
Until the EPA gives us the approval.
And so where, do we have any sense of timing, or any initial feedback, I mean, could this be at the ninth hour in terms of finding out what exactly needs to be done?
I, in that regard, we're dependent on them, and they, we brought on another consultant to help us push that through, the EPA, they asked for clarification a month ago, Sal.
What's their, I know this is a tough one, but what's their history with other projects in terms of getting back to us in a timely fashion, or not?
It's not a matter of timely fashion.
How much?
But it's what they come back with.
Right.
The EPA, the abatement plan, the self-implemented plan that was submitted to EPA was sent up, reviewed, responded to, got a dozen and a half plus comments, the abatement, the environmental consultant that was working on the plan addressed questions and concerns, some of them were bigger questions, some of them were, you forgot dotting the i, or this table, can you format this table in a different way so the information's presented thusly, some of it is just presentation, there, where the, after the third submission, we're down to four questions, but those questions are very meaty questions, and as Mark said, it has to do with the amount of removal versus encapsulation based on the data that's presented. The initial, the EPA doesn't necessarily move at a pace that we would think is expeditious. In this timeline, if you go back to attachment two, the abatement plan submission and then approval for Phase Three was taken at eight months, we're past that, and it wasn't, it wasn't that we're getting, we're getting the back and forth with the EPA, it just takes a very long time, what we're left with, as Mark said, there's another consultant to refine these last questions and help with the game plan, but it's kind of like getting a second opinion on our plan, on how to proceed with the EPA to minimize it, when you look at attachment four, it says that there's two schemes, when you see the bottom of the sheet, it says, abatement scheme one, abatement scheme two, abatement scheme one is the one that the design team has been working on, and that is most likely closest to what will occur, but in part of the process, they also looked at what's the worst case, worst case is taking out a lot of masonry, excessive, what would be considered from our view, excessive masonry, so that's to give you a wider range, or an upper limit on what it might be, the, once the, it was realized that there wasn't going to be a chance to do any windows this summer, it kind of changes the timeline, so there's more time to, to fight those fights with the EPA, not accept things, try to get it, get it down to a more cost efficient number, got more time to fight with the EPA, it's going to take, might take another three months to get through the EPA, to get to the most cost conscious approach to the abatement. That being said, you can schedule your bidding for the more efficient time, Peter can explain the importance of bidding at the right time, right time of the year, right season for bidding certain types of work, so, I hope I helped you.
I thought we wanted, timing wise, though, for this to kind of flow nicely, so that we don't have to bring people in after construction has kind of, everybody's gone back, we don't want to pull everybody back for a separate project, because the cost, I mean, I see the one point, what is it, one point, 1 million dollars worth, addition, worst case scenario between the two, right, between...
Delta between the two.
Right, the change between scheme one and scheme two is a difference of about 1.1 million dollars. But I'm just worried about, I am worried about the timing, are we, you know, if there's a huge delay, could that cost go up even further?
That's taken care of in the escalation factor.
It is, okay.
The windows were...
I know I'm going off into the window tangent, but...
The schedule on the window was always two summers worth of work, so even after the, the very initial plan was some work, roof work, this year, was this year, originally the roof was, tried to do it over two years, not to overburden them, because it's 100,000 square feet, it's kind of a big roofing job, because they couldn't get any work done this past summer on the roof because of bad bids, became a one-year project, and it'll be managed by Gilbain to make sure that it gets done, it's doable, the deadline for getting the square footage on was always the beginning of this school year.
Right.
The timeline on the, on the windows, yeah, it wanted, wanted, the initial blush was to overlap them so that you have mobilizations, so it was 2015, 2016 was the timeframe for the project, it's going to be 2015, 2016, 2017, if you get the windows approved for sometime this year, the funding, take care of the EPA and all that, there's no way to get, even if the EPA called up right now and said, you win, we still have a month of bidding, a few weeks of evaluation, and a month of going through Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, say everything worked perfectly, there would be no way to secure the physical windows to do the work this summer, hope that helps.
Could someone take us through from 1B, the 3, 28, 14 column of numbers, and just the subtotals, to attachment three, the 3, 26, 14 column of numbers? The two, the bottom line is the same, what I'd like to do is tie up the subtotals in between, because they don't appear to be the same.
Mark, let me, let me take you step, Peter Manning, again, from Gilbain, I can speak for the construction cost components of this spreadsheet, and that really is probably the biggest factor, the...
If I might, just, is there anybody who can take us through, how do we know that, I'm trying to tie out the estimates on, from 1B to the estimates on three, and let's start with something as simple as soft costs, the 3, 26, 14 estimate soft cost has 1.2 million dollars and change on 1B, on number three, it has 1.421, I'm just trying to get a flavor for why that changed, when it's dated the same, and...
My name is Mike Delas, I'm with Arcatus, we're the program manager, so what we tried to do with attachment three was break out the different phases, the costs that go within each phase, so the numbers, when you, when you're looking at 1A and 1B, the, the fee for the general contractor, and the, and the different fees associated with each phase are down at that, at bottom numbers, number two, soft cost. Okay, so when you go to, when you go to Phase Three, they organize, so soft costs you see is at the top, we pulled those soft costs out, and all the phases, like the contingencies, the escalation, the owner contingency, the construction contingency, and the owner contingency are all within Phase One, so you can see the total cost for each phase, which is what we try to do with, with attachment three, because I think that's more from visually, visibly, it's more, it's easier to see, it's, it's broken down a little differently, it's easier to see all the costs associated with that phase, because each time, each time a cost goes up for a certain phase, there's several percentages that go as well, including contingencies and fees and other things like that, so if you're looking at, if you're on attachment number three, Phase Two, new construction renovation, Phase Two, the jump that I know was the big jump that you're worried about and everybody's worried about is a 3.665 million.
Actually, I'm just trying to get to the rightmost column that's labeled the same on attachment three as it is on 1B, and my question is, why aren't they the same if they're labeled the same and done on the same date?
Well, we, we've handed out this spreadsheet before, and we've, we kept them the same, but, and I think Sal might explain, we were going to, we thought it'd be easier for you to read if all the, if all the costs, the changes associated with each phases, they went up, were grouped together, so Phase One on, on sheet three has the construction phase, but it also has the escalation and the contingencies to show, to just group them together, rather than them being all separated.
Can, can you take me from 1.2 million on 1B to 1.4 million on number three, what changed? Both were down on 3, 26, 14.
The 1.2 million on 1B for the Webster design?
Yep.
Okay, these, these soft costs, these are, this is the 1.2, this is soft cost total, soft cost total on attachment three is up, is up top.
Right.
All those numbers are included in that 4.1.4 million, but we also put in the contingency, because that is related to soft costs, we just kind of grouped them all together, contingency is, is at the bottom on 1B, so attachment three is really just grouping them a different way that's easier, would have been easier to read.
All right, the soft cost contingency?
Soft cost contingency on 1B is number five down at the bottom, number 5.1.
If I could step in, just to explain, because there was a lot of discussion, and Mike was explaining it directly, but just to help focus, if you look on attachment three, left-hand column, for the descriptors of each item, you'll see code numbers 4.1, 4.3, 5.1, and if you cycle back to attachment 1B, you'll see that there's different categories, one, two, three, four, five, and subcategories such as 4.1, 4.2, as Mike explained, attachment three was basically to answer a question that was brought up last time, how is, what is the cost of each phase, was basically what was asked, and this was the attempt, attachment three was the attempt to portray it that way, it's not a different estimate for 3, 3, 26, 14, it's just moving the line items in different groups, so you can, to answer the question that was asked, the, what I do see as a confusion is where it says subtotal of all phases soft cost, that, that actually should be partial soft costs, because you're trying to tie it back, it's a poorly labeled descriptor, because as you see, there's some things that are not from category four, there's some things from category five, which are contingencies, and something from category seven, which is the soft cost, so it's just a reformatting, so I hope that helps, you're not going to get a direct tie from seeing column on attachment 1B to attachment three, because they're just sorted in a different fashion to answer a question that was asked at the last meeting.
So if we take that, and just on soft costs alone, we're saying that there's, on 3, 26, 14, we had estimated approximately 1.4 million in soft costs. Is that correct?
Yeah, what you see on attachment 1B, what they were calling soft costs, which is all those items in number two, is what was called labeled soft cost, correct.
And that's the same as 3, 26, 14 on attachment three, with a 143 added in?
I'm, I'm sorry, which line did you go to?
I'm looking at soft costs at 1.2, 3.3 plus 143 equals roughly the 1.421 on the soft cost on attachment three.
You're not going to get a direct tie for subtotals from... You're not going to get a direct tie for subtotals from one sheet to the other because they're reformatting. That's where I was leading you to the colorized sheet, Attachment number 3.
Well, the 143, comma, 311 is what we said was missing from the soft costs here, and that is the specific number that's also tied to a line item here, so the 143 is not the reason for the difference. If, all right, because we moved it from, we moved that as, as a line item from 1B to Attachment 3, right?
From 1B, all of these factors, all of these line items that are numbered were pulled from Attachment 1B, all the line items were separated from these categories, but they kept the line number, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, so on and so forth. And they were assigned to the different phases of the project because the question was, how much is the window phase? How much is the, so there's not going to be a direct correlation from the sums on Attachment 3 to the sums on Attachment 1B except for the final total. It's just categorizing it differently.
That's okay, I'm just trying to get to subtotal for soft, all phases soft cost. And your explanation says that-
For 1B, it would be the 1.4, that's across the whole job. You're looking at section 4, subtotal.
Am I just looking at a different number here?
I'm sorry.
All right. I'm looking at-
This is, I'm sorry. Subtotal soft right there.
1.23, right? Plus, you add the 143, 311 from number 5, soft cost contingency.
Yes.
You add those two numbers up, all right, it's 1.6, all right, 1.347, roughly 1.4, and this is 1.4, so it's roughly the same.
It's roughly the same, but if you go to Attachment 3, look at the descriptors, where the section that says all phases, you're taking 4.1, 4.3, 5.1, 5.4, 7.1. So you're taking numbers, line items, out of three different categories on Attachment 1B, and it just so happens that you're picking the right number. It's kind of luck that you're making those, those numbers match, that's not the-
So that's just pure coincidence that 1.4 adds up is the same on both sheets, looking at contingencies?
You have to look at the descriptors on each line item, 1.4, 4.1, 4.3, so on and so forth.
All right.
Those tie over.
Okay, let's just take that for a moment. From 32614 to 21815, the number goes from 1.421 to 1.446, so virtually no change in soft costs.
In those five lines, yes.
Okay, so, help me out, we just heard there was a big change in soft costs, and the numbers don't seem to support that.
There again, back to Attachment 1, I think you're, do we have the budget that was presented last time? Do you have a copy of that? To get to, excuse me, I believe to get to the answer that we want was the sheet that was handed out at the previous meeting that was creating confusion for some other items as to the breakdown.
Right, but somebody stepped through these numbers and said there's a huge difference in soft costs, and I'm just trying to get on these pages with these numbers what that huge difference is, because I can't, it doesn't seem to tie back to the numbers that are on these sheets, that's all.
It would have, it would have to be reform, this was the, no, that's not the one. Oh, I understand, I understand. So look, I don't want to hand this out again, but this was handed out before. The soft cost from the estimate, the breakdown on the estimate of the Silver Petricelli was 600,000, went to 21815 is showing is 1.55 million. That was a different presentation. We're attempting to answer a different question that was asked.
Okay, but these soft costs are still 1.4 and change. So out of the-
To find all the soft costs on Attachment 3, you would have to, you would have to run down the sheet and tally all the items that are labeled 2.1, 2.211, so on and so forth. As I said, that where it says soft cost, that's an inaccurate description of that subtotal line.
Okay, so I guess one question would be, since we're saying it's such a big deal and it's hard to see it on this, could we get just side by side what the soft costs that were included in the original estimate and the soft costs that we have on 21815? So we kind of, actually three columns, I guess, because I'd like, I'd still like to tie to the 326 number because it comes out to the same total, 11.8. So if you're telling me there's a big difference in soft costs, there's got to be a lowering someplace else.
Other than to reissue what was issued last time that was, raised the question that we're trying to solve on this spreadsheet.
First question is just, what's the difference in soft cost between the three? Do we have that?
What's that? Conceptual estimate soft cost for Silver Petricelli on 11, 2013 was 604, 738.
Compared to 12 plus 14, is there any, is there a list or schedule of what's missing from the Silver Petricelli soft cost sheet?
Do you want to explain?
Here's the question. We're doing this next month. We want to know what are we screwed up? How do we make sure that our next estimate includes all those soft cost numbers if we don't know what they are? That's all. Is there any way to tell what we left? Because what I'm hearing is we left stuff out of the soft cost, right? We didn't include this, we didn't include this, we didn't include this. All I'm asking is what, where's the list and what was the cost differential for those?
I believe is Attachment 1. Right, you want a separate list.
What was that?
I mean, to answer that question, if you look at 1B and comparing side by side, you can see where the PEA, Gilbain estimate is, actually has a line item, and look where Silver Petricelli has a zero line item. It's kind of hard to have two different companies present, there's not a standard presentation for a conceptual budget.
Is there some, is there some way of saying to somebody who's doing this next, did you include these numbers and can you tell us what those estimates are and make sure they're not left out? All right, because it, and the total differential then is the $600,000 here? Okay, so if we go up to just Attachment 3 now, using 32614, that's 1.4 for soft costs, and on 21815, it's also 1.4. So soft costs have not been the reason for the growth from 11.8 to 14.9. Is that correct?
Across the conceptual estimate, that was correct.
I'm just looking at Attachment 3 now.
Correct, you're going from 320, the decision was 326, they picked the conceptual scheme, which had all the lines filled out. So those numbers were holding steady. Yes, I would agree with that statement.
For that 11.8, soft cost stays approximately the same, it goes up here, $20,000 or something. Everybody in agreement with that?
No.
Okay.
There's, part of the soft costs that are listed in the, on that Attachment 1B are included in the line items under New Construction Renovation Phase 1 on Attachment 3. See, for example, PEA AE design fee, that's a soft cost. Geotechnical testing, that's a soft cost. So what Sal was trying to tell you was that it's not, it's not sorted the same way. So the fact that that 1.4 corresponds with the original spreadsheet, the 1.4 on Attachment 1B is coincidence.
Is there any sheet that kind of, because soft costs were brought up as one of the drivers to the increase, is there some way that shows soft costs in?
Whatever they are.
Yeah, wherever they are.
And I think the owner's rep can probably just take this and add one more column to show what the original SPA estimate carried. Isn't that, that the way to handle that? But it's not sorted the same way, Mike. It just needs to be sorted the same way so you can see the growth.
What I'm, what I'm hearing, and if I'm not hearing this correctly, what I'm hearing is the 1.4 on Attachment 3, the right-hand column, that's entitled subtotal all phases soft costs, is not all the soft costs that are on Attachment 3.
Correct, that's an inaccurate label of that line.
All right, that's okay, I just, so if that's only a partial, what I'm asking is what are the total soft costs on Attachment 3? Because they seem to come much higher than the total soft costs on 1B, which is 1.2 million plus 143,000.
Much like what Peter, Peter said, on Attachment 3, if there was one more column all the way to the right labeled soft cost, and it would pick out each line in all of these phases and tally down at the bottom, that's the way to tie out that soft cost line. You could actually do that for each one of these segments, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so going horizontally you would have a tie-up. There's a way to do that.
All right, well, let's just take these one at a time and see if there are any more coincidences in terms of numbers. On 326, there's a 2.56 million for subtotal roof construction, and a year later, there's 2.56 million for subroof construction. Is that fair to say there wasn't any growth in that line?
Correct.
Mike, can I just make an explanation here? Over the life of the roof, we originally bid this roof, and if you see the 10-8 column, the 2.799 number was the first bid that we took for the roof. The team collaboratively made the decision to go out to rebid that roof because, you know, there were, there were some value engineering suggestions made by the low bidder at that point in time. So at that point, we were 400,000, 500,000 over budget, but we decided that we would pull that bid, we would make some adjustments to the bid package, and, and rebid it, and that effort, though not always fruitful, in this case was fruitful. Because the numbers came down, one, because we had more competition, we had more bidders, two, we bid it at a better time of the year for bidding schoolwork, and three, we made some adjustments to the bid documents to reflect some potential savings. So the, we did eventually end up at a number where we were targeting, but it was with a lot of pain to get there. So I just wanted to explain how we got to that point.
No, thank you. Is she okay if I go on with this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So then, in looking at, so that's the roof. If we look at the windows, and that subtotal, from 328 to 21815, we go up about 500,000. From 3 million to 3.5 million. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. And that is, at this point, that is still an estimate because we do not have hard numbers on that. And the complexity of, you know, the abatement, the masonry removal and the extent of the masonry removal really is what's driving that number. We don't, I'm speaking for the committee, but I don't think the committee intends to come back and ask for, you know, any more money until we actually go out and bid that number and get a hard number for that.
Well, yeah, that will be kind of a next, Phase 3 for additional money, because we're spending all the money that has been approved so far on the first two phases.
Correct.
All right, and then looking at FF and E, we've gone from 200,000 to 185, so that's really not a change.
Correct. But it is, it is a change from the original SPA estimate because I think they carried 360. And, you know, that was, that was really done in an effort to try and bring the budget back. The Board of Ed and the, and the school administration basically said, "We can live with using existing furniture in these, in certain classrooms or cafeteria."
Okay, but there are enough chairs for every student that needs it.
Yes.
Because going back a few, going back a few building projects, that wasn't necessarily the case.
I think what's remaining, what's remaining, the 200 is mostly cafeteria furniture.
Okay, okay.
Here again, in comparison-
Sal, I'm just going back to Thomason where we actually built classrooms and didn't furnish them, and the day two list was enormous.
Furniture. The, again, in comparison, there was a lot more discussion on the need at the conceptual level of what was needed for furniture. So that's why the $200,000 was picked up by this team as opposed to when Silver Petricelli budgeted it, it was their historic number per square foot or per number of rooms. They developed that number. It wasn't that it was wrong, it was based on their historical knowledge. We had more discussion on that, so the $200,000 number right out the bat was more of a design development number, and that's why it was so close to what we're really looking at.
Yep, and that's okay. What I'm trying to get back to then, given all those numbers are roughly the same, when we look at the increase from 11.8 to 14.9, what we're really talking about is new construction slash renovation Phase 2, which goes from 4.58 million to 7.18, 7.2.
Correct.
And that's a 75% increase roughly. And that's, when you look at all the numbers in between, we're looking at 118,000, 170,000, 320,000, 38, 20, 15, 25, 5 million, 2, 8, 6, 6, 5, 80. Even the owner's contingency, which is a percentage, just goes up from 366 to 442. However, there's one line that goes from 3.6 to 5.9. So in that one line, we have virtually the entire overage for the entire project. Can somebody explain what's going on there?
So that number represents the total construction cost of all subcontracted work and our estimate of those at that different, those different phases of the project. So, you know-
Actually, it jumped up 3 million day one and it stayed at 3 million for the project. So my question is still, can somebody explain what's going on there?
It jumped up from 3.6 to 6. That's the 3 million year- That's the 3 million you're referring to? So.
2.4, forgive me, quick math.
Okay. What we tried to explain to you, on the conceptual estimate, it was based on square foot numbers comps that we have done in the past.
What were the square foot numbers on 326? And what were they on 6.2?
On 326, the cafeteria expansion was 2,600 feet.
And what was the dollars per square foot?
277.
It's actually, our estimate was at 245.
245.
And the class.
Does the 245 times how many square feet equal the 3.6 number?
No. It's, it's a summation of a lot of different categories, and if you go to 1B, you'll see that. It basically outlines the expansion, the renovations, the kitchen renovations.
If you could, where on 1B does it show that?
The number one.
Category number one, new construction renovation. So that 3.6 is broken down as follows.
Okay. Now, do we have a comparable schedule like this to explain how we got to 5.9?
We don't, because we have a, an estimate that's this thick, which basically defines the 6.12 number.
Okay.
And what I tried to highlight earlier was the main components of that growth, square foot increases, complexity of structural components, site and civil detail that was given, and abatement and demolition.
All right, but I don't see any analysis that shows us how we get from 3.6 to 5.9. I don't dispute those are the reasons. I'm just trying to, to see the numbers that get us there. How much of the numbers were, were each of those? How do we go from, it's up 3 million, it's all in one line? All right, that's, that's the question we've been asking for nine months now, is how do we, how do we increase this 3 million? Trying to figure out how we got there.
Let me just try and explain the journey a little bit, because the 5.9 are the numbers. Those are the bid numbers. Those are actual subcontract numbers that, that we have in hand. We, we went through a long journey to get there. On 6.2, when we came out with an estimate of 6.12, we said, oh, boy, we're way over budget. And we went through an exhaustive value engineering process and identified a roadmap to get back to budget. A lot of those items were accepted in our VE log, and, and we have a list of those things. There were a lot of things that weren't accepted by the building committee and/or the school. One is air conditioning in the cafeteria. Two is reducing the size of the cafeteria from, from 3,100 square feet down to 1,600 square feet. We basically gave a roadmap, how to get back to the 3.6 or close to the 3.6 million dollar number. And, you know, somewhere right before the 7.2 estimate, we, we were, you know, the, the building committee and the, and the school basically landed on a list of value engineering activities or items that they would accept to reduce cost. That's how we ended up with a $5 million estimate. Okay? We're still not even done with the design yet. At that point, we're still in the design development.
Yeah, part of what we're laboring with is where we got the authorization to exceed the 11.6 million, which was the budget.
We, sorry, I was just pulling up an email that might, so, one, the budget has not been exceeded at this point.
But it was exceeded at 6 June of 2014.
When we, and we had conversations in regards to this with, you know, administration, as well as, you know, the Board of Education, explaining exactly where we are and the steps we were taking to try and get back to the number. At the point that it became clear that we were not going to be able to do the windows completely within budget, we approached the Board of Ed and asked for an ed spec change. So at that point, the goal was to do as much of the windows as possible with whatever budget was remaining between phases one and two, recognizing that the expediency of the project, in order to get students in the chairs in August, or September, as it is now, we had to make some decisions and we had to work within a very constrained timeline. So at that point, we, we got the ed spec change and we continued to try and maintain and value engineer, as Mr. Manning said, across the entire project. At this point, we are, for phases one and two, and for essentially the design and some of the windows costs, we are at the 11.6 number without money to do the rest of the windows.
The, well, let's take that for just a minute. Is there a schedule that shows these, the tasks we have completed, tasks we have to do with an estimate to complete that shows, based on the money we spent and the estimate to complete, we can come in at the 11.6? Because my concern now is that we're not going to fit the 11.6 under these two projects, because everything kind of seems to be going up.
Well, at, at this point, I think this is a good opportunity to go to attachment four.
Sarah, do we have that? 2. 1A, 1A, 1B. 3.
Okay, the top part before the, we get to the budget estimates for the window, is the entire, total committed costs for phases one, two, and then what has partially, or what is committed for phase three, which as you see is the design documents for the windows, as well as some of the environmental testing. So right now, the total committed dollar amount as of February 18th is 11,510,401.
Okay, how much of that is completed construction?
I would say maybe 5 to 8% at this point with the work that's gotten on. Now, I don't know that we've even submitted our first construction requisition, because we really just started in January.
Okay, and how much contingency is left?
Do we have?
7.2.
Yeah, but you said as left as of now?
Well, left or spent, either side of that.
We still have over 400,000. We haven't spent much of the contingency at this point.
Okay, what was the total contingency when we started?
The 326, March 26 number?
Whatever ties after this sheet.
For the owner's contingency, we started with 442,000, and at this point, we're over 400,000, so unspent.
Okay. But we've only done 4 or 5% of the building? Is that correct?
Correct.
And we used about 10% of the contingency?
We didn't use any, any of the contingency for phase two.
Not for phase two.
Okay, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand?
I misspoke. You didn't misunderstand, I'm sorry.
So how much of the contingency do we have left?
We have all 442,000 left.
Phase two.
Okay.
Okay, and where did we use contingency?
Soft costs.
Are we done with soft costs? Is that 32,000 home free, or is that still can get? I'm not sure I understood that.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, what are we done with that might involve that? And again, the concern on soft costs and contingencies that on another school building project, we went through our contingency long before finishing the project.
Yep, when we, when we made the 326, the budget on 326, we had a 10% soft cost contingency. It was 144, 143,000. We're now down to about 32,900, just with other things we have to add, like a site monitor, a special inspector. So we kind of factored in that we would have to use those. Besides the recent addition of an additional environmental consultant for about 10,000, I think that, that should be it for additional soft costs.
Okay, so there are no soft costs left or needed for phase three?
Well, that, well, it's, the soft cost is an overall, it's, that, that environmental assessment, that would technically be under phase three, but this soft cost number, it's for the whole, it's for the whole project.
Okay, so in the 11.5 number here, we have costs for phase one, phase two, and phase three.
On attachment three?
On attachment number four.
See, this is, when we broke it out, so owner's contingency, like PEA design fee, Perkins Eastman is a 5.9% fee, it's, it's a, it's part of the soft cost, but in order to, we grouped the soft costs together for each phase in this, in this spreadsheet. I can bring you, I have an actual, we have actual numbers for phase one and phase two, and it's a budget sheet that we use to keep us, that I, that I hand out every building committee meeting, and it tracks all the soft costs, all the construction costs we incurred as we go along. I think maybe you would like to see that.
Well, what I'm really trying to get to
Yep.
is, given everything that's changed so far in this, I'm trying to boost the credibility that we know where we are and that we'll finish under the 11.6 that's currently authorized. Is there anything you can show me that would help that improve the credibility that we can do that?
Yeah, well, it's this, this, the number that Mark previously showed on the attachment four, the subtotal for phase one and two, and for three, what the costs committed, because the windows have already been designed and there's already been a large amount of environmental work that we have paid for. So I am confident that we will not, for phases one and two, and all the costs we've already encumbered for phase three, we will not go over the 11.6 million. We still have, for phase two, we still have 442,000 in contingency. For phase one, we still have 78,000 in contingency. And for fa, and for soft costs, we have 32,000 in contingency. Those are all included in that 11.5 million.
Okay. Now, I've been hogging some of the questions here. Sheila, do you have some?
No, no, I'm just trying to.
There's a lot of numbers here.
Yeah, how much of the, how much money has been spent on phase three so far?
If you go down to where it says windows phase three investigation design bid, and you have numbers 5.2 and 5.5. You have PEA design fee for 149,000, and environmental testing and design fees for 68,000, 68,000, for a total of 218,000 was expended on phase three.
Okay, and we said about, we started construction or spent about 5% of the project so far in construction?
Well, they're, they're about 5% complete. They've done 5% of the work. They had one, a small pay, pay application for the month of December, and it was, off the top of my head, I think it was 78,000.
Thank you for that, I was more interested in what we're obligated.
That we, yes.
To do, how much work we've done.
Next week, the, it will, next, next, next week is a building committee meeting, and we will present the, the costs for phase, for the month of January.
Guys, I'm sorry, I'm still coming back to the, the one line I'm on here that contains virtually the entire overage and looking to get a better handle on, on what is driving that and what, kind of what we missed, both in, because if I look at this overall, conceptual design or whatever, the process we went through was off by 50%. There's got to be a better process.
Well, the numbers were made off in Peter's, Peter Manning stated, it's a conceptual number and it's a square footage. You figure out much, how, the square footage of your building, and you apply a number, we had 245 for the cafeteria and 277 for the, for the classrooms. But, and what, what we did here to compare them is, there's a, once the design development documents came out, you know, it's a, you have a full set of plans with all the details, and you can go specifically and pull out quantities. It was this amount of steel, this much amount of brick, this much amount of block, and you can quantify those more specifically. So what this, what we're looking at right here is comparing, it's only comparing the numbers to the conceptual number. There's a long list for each, for each phase of construction or for each, you know, for electrical, for plumbing, that's all broken out separately in the 6.2 estimate, which I'm sure we can get you a copy of, it's about, I think it's about 60 pages, and it quantifies every single part of the project. So comparing the numbers, it's difficult to compare from conceptual to design development and the, from the, we asked, we asked Peter to look for the drivers, and he, it was the ones he stated before, you know, the cafeteria size increased, we brought that back down, but not, not completely to where it was. And then that was just to get, get enough seats in the cafeteria.
Okay, let me try and catch up. One of the things the superintendent alluded to in front of the Board of Finance was that the building committee went out and picked a very expensive architect that kind of, of course, it came in much higher because the architect didn't follow the original design. What I'm seeing here is that What I'm seeing here is that the Silver Petroselli conceptual estimate and the 326 conceptual estimate are roughly $200,000 apart.
At that stage, we thought that it could possibly work, that these numbers could be close, but once the actual documents came out, and we looked at it in more detail, we got actual numbers.
So we've done conceptual estimates for Riverfield School, which is originally $9 million, we paid an architect to do a conceptual design, and that number went up to 16 million, then back down to 14 million, and now back at 16 million, the last jump because of PCBs found in the gym, which is nobody's issue. But from just a design process, we bounced all over the block, even though we paid for conceptual design upfront. What I'm hearing here is that we paid for one conceptual design upfront, paid for a sectional, second conceptual design upfront that you all brought in, and it still is, you know, accurate to plus or minus 50%, and we're using big numbers here, so that's a lot of money. And so that's where the concern, that's where the passion, that's where the emotion comes from, is 50% is a lot to be off. How much did we pay for the conceptual design? For 326?
For Silver, well, that was, it's part of everybody's fee, it was, the architect has a fee, the construction manager has a fee, and we have a fee ourselves. So it wasn't any additional money.
So what I'm hearing is, is those numbers are pretty useless, though, if they're plus or minus 50% on a project this big.
I mean, they give you a base, but you really don't know until you get the documents, and then you don't know the actual numbers until you get bids.
Yep, understand that process. What I'm saying is that we get a number at that point that's plus or minus 50%. So that really doesn't help.
I mean, it was the best we could do at the time.
Yep, but it's still plus or minus 50%. That seems to be the case on Riverfield. I'm not picking anybody here, but we got a couple different points that seem to be the case on Riverfield, and that seemed to be the case here. And so my takeaway on that is, you know, going out to bid, or doing funding, or setting things up on a conceptual design, doesn't make any sense that we need to use another process, that this process that we follow design is inherently flawed.
Yeah, and it's also hard when it was a different architect. We don't know exactly what they had in mind for their design, it was a different architect that did that conceptual design, we have a different architect designing it now. I don't know who the architect had to make that estimate, but maybe if, I don't know.
That was my coming in assumption. That's what I heard the other night at the Board of Finance meeting, that the architect on this job didn't do the job, and we hired, you know, we hired an expensive architect, so we got an expensive project.
I don't...
But what I'm seeing here on 1B is that I don't call 11-6 to 11-8 a big difference. So what you're saying doesn't, isn't reflected in the numbers.
And I don't think it was the architect's, it wasn't the architect's design that, I don't know if they had it, it wasn't because they had a different design, we don't know what that, the other architect's design was, to make these numbers.
Well, hopefully, hopefully they shared it. Hopefully, they shared it with you.
Conceptually, we knew that, or we believed that we were close, which is why we proceeded.
Yeah, well, the numbers are close. I'm not, this is not a critique of any individual architect or professional that's involved in that. It's a critique of the process, which says that, you know, we based a lot of our assumptions in planning on something that's accurate, plus or minus 50%. That's a huge variance.
You know, one thing that I...
If you could, just, okay.
One thing that I think has to be considered from day one is schedule was a huge driver on this project, and having Fannies in the Seats in August of 2016 was always the goal for the renovations and the additions. The design process went very quickly, much more quickly than a normal schematic design, design development, CD process, and that was really driven by schedule. Part of the escalation that you're seeing in that last 5-9 number is really a factor of the start date of the project, it slipped, we started in the dead of winter. Concrete in the middle of, you know, December, January, February. Site work in the middle of December, January, February, when we were supposed to have started in October. All of these things are factors that go into bid numbers, and the process to get approval and get bid numbers that were acceptable really took that much time so that we compressed the schedule. Just compressing the schedule is inherent in adding a little bit of cost to a job. So it's not an easy, this is what created the increase. It's a whole confluence of a whole lot of different items that add up, and I just, I think, we've all, as design professionals, we've all been very sensitive to the fact that the schedule for the renovations has been first and foremost. And that's why we're out there working, you know, Saturdays, weekends, to try and make sure that we are going to meet that date. So I hope I wasn't out of line saying that.
No, no, I'm searching for an answer. What I'm hearing you say is that, one of the takeaways is that first conceptual design we did is really a waste of time and waste of money, because it's not worth it. You came in with different numbers, a different way to estimate, it came in close to that, but you didn't really use that. All right, and then the conceptual estimate, either one of those is still off 50%, so it's not like conceptual estimate number two was bad, or conceptual number one was bad. We just didn't use number one, so whatever we paid for that was just money down the drain. And then second, the conceptual estimate's plus or minus 50%, so we really need to get the detailed design done and go out to bid with those numbers, so we know what those are, that this whole, because when we go through and approve things based on a conceptual design, and I'm not even limiting it to Ludlow, just to be clear, we went through the exact same problem on Riverfield. The number we originally shown was 9 million, I think we got it up to 11 million at some point, and then the numbers grew from there up to 16, we value engineered that down to 14 million, and short of finding PCBs in the walls in the gym, it would have probably been a $14 million number, which is still 50% over the original 9 million conceptual design that we were looking at and planning for. So I guess that's, what I'm trying to get a handle on is what plus or minus 50%, where's that value, and how we change our process, so we have a better number of, because otherwise, guys, I got to tell you, the other boards and commissions are not, didn't approve this expecting we'd have a 50% gap. The other boards and commissions are sitting here saying, we still don't have, we spent $11.6 million, and we don't have the windows done? We paid for Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, and we're not getting Phase Three. So there's a number of concerns out there with that, so I don't...
No, I, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, it's going to take a, you don't want to take a leap of faith when you're looking at that much money, and approving that much money, and looking at future building projects, and, you know, people are going to be wanting some level of guarantee that these numbers are accurate. So I would agree with the first selectmen that the process did not work in this case, and we've got to address that.
And, you know, I still come back to this one line that is driving the whole overage that's off by somewhere between 60 and 75%. And how do we get just a better grounding or understanding on what specifically drove that? Is it, I mean, were our cost estimates just, why were they off that much in that phase? If the other phases really kind of came in on track, it's literally that one line item in all this that is driving that. What is it that we missed or can't, and again, that sounds a little more, I'm not looking for somebody to blame, I'm trying to understand the process, and what is it that we don't know enough to estimate at that point? If you ask me to estimate what the stock market was going to end this year on, I can guess, but I don't have any basis or frame of reference for doing that. I'm looking at this and saying, we ought to be in better shape because of all the different schools that are done, because of all the different projects like this. 50% just sounds, actually, 60 to 75% in that one line item, a lot to be off. So any help in kind of getting us more comfortable with that? And I realize I've asked that before, and obviously, I'm not comfortable, so I don't know how to frame that question better, Sheila, unless you have a...
Well, and I'm also just looking at the cost per square foot, I mean, how do you, how can we push back on those prices? They seem extreme, really.
I don't have a particular answer for that. I know a lot of the conversation and discussion on the committee level was, you know, surrounded around some of the individual trades being the discrepancy, and as you pointed out, somewhere up, somewhere down, and where that made up, and what was driving that cost, and how we could stay in budget. Also, some of the conversation as well, is to agree with what you're saying, the process is challenging, and from our perspective, from the get-go, 11.63 million dollars was not going to be able, we weren't comfortable with being able to do the entire project. However, we continued to try and make decisions based on getting it done, and when it was clear that we were not going to make it, we tried to be as transparent as possible, so that people could give feedback. And at the end of the day, the motivation and the factor driving our decision is to try and ensure that our young people have a school building with a climate that is big enough to learn, and an opportunity to have lunch in a comfortable environment, and also to strengthen opportunities in STEM classes, in science, technology classes. So, you know, those factors were driving this, as well as obviously the cost. And if we go back to all the conversations and discussions in the minutes, and you can see a very diligent effort to try and stay within cost constraints. You know, at the end of the day, yes, that one is 60%. Exactly why, I don't know, I think Mr. Manning, you know, mentioned, and he was, he had mentioned this along with the gentleman from Arcadis, that there's a host of factors going involved in some of this escalation. Can we break it out? I don't know. Will we ask the questions? Absolutely.
Okay, I would love to... Yes, the two questions for me is, what sort of analysis can we see on that soft cost number, because it looks like when we put them all back together, they all coincidentally look the same, and I'm willing to buy the fact they don't, but I just, I, but what I struggle with is even, as much as we compare that back to the 600,000 in the SPA, it does matter, because we came up with, they came up with 11-6, we started 11-8. So the real issue is from 11-8 to where we are, is what matters, because everything else kind of came out in the wash. They were under on some, up on others, soft costs were off, but, you know, they had construction things down to make that all work. And just to keep consistency and not to get into a finger-pointing contest, to start with the 11-8. And if I look at this and do that, what we're saying is, on the, from 11-8 to, one of the other number three pieces here. From the 11-8 to the 14-9, because those are all based on the Attachment Three, the soft cost numbers didn't change that dramatically? Am I understanding that correct?
I think we're somewhat rehashing some...
Yep, yeah, I'm trying to get clarity on this, so I apologize if we've covered this ground a little bit already, it's just we've covered a lot of ground, and I'm trying to get some closure, and trying to identify some takeaways. Because I heard, you know, that the, if I, well, some of the myths surrounding this project. One myth was the architect we picked was too expensive and designed a project too expensive. But if both conceptual designs were virtually equal, that's not the case. At least, it doesn't appear to be supported as the case. The other potential myth, and that's what I'm trying to clarify here, is that one of the big drivers for the overage is soft costs. Well, we're going from Attachment Three only, 326 and 11-8, to 14-9, on the same sheet with the same stuff, it doesn't look like soft cost becomes the driver, because they're included on this sheet. And it's really one line item that does the whole overage. So forgive me, but it looks like soft cost had nothing to do with it. And I just, before I use that as my takeaway, I just want to confirm that that's in fact what these numbers are telling me.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, it looks like the soft cost differences that are not included in the top part, which Sal pointed out, the 1.42 versus 1.46, is we're looking, the soft cost would make probably 250 to 300,000 dollars with that number.
Could you, could you point out what numbers you're using on Attachment Three and Attachment Three only, just so we have that?
Okay, so for, I did the 326 column, and the 218 column.
Yep.
For all intents and purposes, right up to line 5.2, the costs are the same.
5.2 is...
PEA design fee. So you have about $125,000 difference there. Environmental testing, you have about 14,000.
Where is, where is envi...
I'm sorry, the 5.5. No, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was looking at the bonding. The bonding is $14,000 difference, 5.3. 5.6, geotechnical's 5,000, I mean, with nickel and diamond here, the code consultant's 20,000. You save on the fees and materials, you save 5,000. And then there was no environmental site assessment, topographic survey, legal services, traffic consultant, site monitor, and special inspector. All those are, those last five I mentioned quickly are about $100,000 in difference. And then the owner's contingencies, as you see, went up about $80,000. So all those things considered are 350, 400,000 dollars.
Okay, and those are things that, why didn't we include fees for those in our conceptual study?
Just taking out the contingency.
Okay, and that contingency is where in the conceptual study?
7.2. And 7.1 at the top.
Yeah, we're on, just on Attachment Three, I'm just trying to stay on, from one, with one architect, one set of professionals, from the conceptual design through this, and we're saying that, on one hand, soft costs go from, drop $100,000 on line 7-1, and goes up about $100,000 with all these. on line seven-one, and goes up about a hundred thousand dollars with all these. And the owner, owner's contingency goes up because the construction price goes up. So, it's a double whammy on the three point six to five point nine number. Sounds like the, all the other little things get lost in the wash for the most part. So, again, my takeaway is soft costs are not the issue, unless I'm missing something.
I would agree. It looks like it comes out.
Close, I mean, not exactly, not to the penny. I'm not trying to, but from a standpoint of being a driver for a three million dollar overage, it's not, soft costs are not the issue. And then we had talk of square footage. Now, could somebody help me out on the square footage for the cafeteria? We added it, we took it away. Where are we now? How, what's the increase in the cafeteria's square footage? We had that nine hundred. We said we reincorporated the student lounge. Is that nine hundred back? Is that nine hundred gone?
Conceptually, we, when we had our three-six number, the cafeteria addition was twenty-six-hundred square feet. The current one we have now is thirty-one hundred. And that is just to fit, to fit all the tables we had in. It was originally higher than that, and during our value engineering process, we brought that back down to a reasonable one that would, that they would get a cafeteria, a size that the students would want to go to, would want to send.
Was the, the new student schedule a factor in that, having it larger, so that, because there are more kids who are going to be taking lunch, I'm assuming at the same time? I don't know the timing of that decision.
There was a number, and it was around five hundred students that was in the board of that spec, that we need to design a cafeteria to house those students.
Five hundred students at any one time during a lunch period?
I believe, I believe so, yep.
And had that gone up from what had typically been in the caf, the number of students in the cafeteria before, I mean, currently, for example?
That depends how far back you go. It's a lot.
Well, actually, for example, this year, since the new schedule isn't in place, how many students typically are in the lunchroom at any one time?
Greg Hatzis, Headmaster for Fillelolo High School. It's a little like comparing apples to oranges, because currently, the way our schedule works is we have four different lunch waves. So, you take the student population divided by four, as opposed to in the new schedule, you'd have three lunch waves. That's, the purpose for that is to, in order to embed lunch and not have it take up an entire period of time, we really needed to condense the time. Forty-two minutes is way too long for a student to, to have lunch anyway. It's a lot of wasted time, to be honest with you. And plus, that's part of the way we were able to add back instructional time. But the other piece is that in our current schedule, students, you know, we, we offer the option of lunch to every student, but many students are making the choice, because lunch takes up a whole period, to take a class instead. So, we do not have, not only are you dividing the population by four, but then you have to reduce it, another twenty-five to thirty percent of the students do not take a lunch. So, so currently, you know, we average about, you know, a hundred and ninety to two-hundred-and-thirty kids in the lunchroom at any given time. But if you, if we were to say to the students, every single one of you has to have lunch, then you take the fifteen hundred, divide it by four, you know, and there you have, you know, your rough number. So, we would, we would add about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five kids, you know, per lunch wave more. Now, reduce it to three lunch waves in the new schedule, and, you know, you get up to the five hundred number, you know, just taking our whole population, dividing it by the three waves.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, was the, was the drive for the increased square footage? You know, I know it was down, up, down, or where we are now, it was driven by the, by the new schedule.
Right. Definitely, I mean, but, but that was part of the original conceptual design, too. I mean, the whole, one of the main drivers of this whole project was in order to get every child a lunch in, you know, in a, in a schedule that worked out and increased instructional time. So, all of those factors came in. If I remember a little bit of the timeline, between the conceptual study of what the actual size, you know, once they decided, when they decided how big the cafeteria was going to be, that's when we started crunching real numbers, in terms of saying, you know, like, what's the, what's our daily attendance rate? Because, you know, maybe we need to factor that out even. The, the original numbers were much higher even, and we started trying to, to really hone in on exactly how many kids would be in there, you know, during a given lunch wave. You know, there's another, there's other purposes here as well, in that, right now, our building does not really have common spaces where we can have large numbers of children. We have the gymnasium, we have, where we have PE classes going on, we have our auditorium space, which cannot fit more than one class at a time. Our cafeteria was a place that we know, we needed to really help improve the climate of our building, as a place where students can go to get group work done, to meet individually, where clubs can meet together. So, that space, I mean, part of this design was about a climate improving effort to really create a space that students can own, feel a part of, as opposed to just a metal box, which is what they have now, covered with sheet rock, you know, because of the, the construction project. And it really is not conducive to promoting the type of environment that we want, you know, our students to thrive in. So, you know, this is not a, it's not a super fancy design, it's not over the top, from my opinion. It is really just, we, we tried to make some improvements to the space so that it could really, you know, help our students feel attached to it and, you know, want to be there. You know, and I know the air conditioning was mentioned earlier. If we're going to pack five hundred kids in a cafeteria, you know, in the months of September and October, and, you know, even part of November sometimes, and then April, May, and June, it's just, it wouldn't be humane to have five hundred kids in the space and have them sit through the heat on that southern exposure that we have on that part of the building. So, so that was, you know, something I will admit was, was a big driver for me.
What was, do you know the cost of the air conditioning?
I don't, but, you know, off the top of my head, that's, my department is to make the, the educational argument and I'll leave the numbers to these guys.
No, that's, that's fine. So, we had air conditioning, we had the square footage as a part of the conversation.
Was AC in the original spec?
Yes. For, for the new additions, for all the new addition pieces.
Including the cafeteria?
Including the new, the portion of the cafeteria that's a new addition.
But it was part of your value engineering in terms of...
And that's all it is now. It is not, it is not, I mean, you know, the air condition, part of the space, you know, affects the entire space, but they're not, you know, adding air conditioning to, you know, what is now the cafeteria, because that's not where they can add it.
That's not a reason for change, though, in the, in the pricing from the conceptual design to where we are now?
That's correct, right. That was, that's part of, it's been a part of the original plan altogether. I think, I think Mr. Manning brought it up as one of the, one of the many things that were discussed in the process, to really try to bring this number down, once, you know, everybody was shocked to see the original number.
So, you mentioned the two things, the air conditioning, the square footage, originally, when you talked about, somebody talked about the value engineering, and that discussion back and forth, were there other, other major elements that are cost drivers that weren't part of the original plan, perhaps, that you can think of, that you discussed?
Yeah, I can talk to that. We developed a detailed log, should I have a copy of it? Square footage was probably the biggest thing, reducing the actual size of the, the additions. Air conditioning was significant amount of money, over three hundred thousand dollar We, we did accept a, a change to the air conditioning from an air handler-type system to a dedicated outside air system, which did reap us some savings of about a hundred There was some site stormwater systems, retention basins that were originally shown on the first set of DD documents that were scaled back, saved over a hundred thousand dollars. We did take a reduction in the square footage of the cafeteria. We were originally at thirty-four hundred. We, we went down. We targeted to get down to three thousand. That was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There were a lot of ten and fifteen thousand dollar changes that, that all added up basically to a total of like five hundred thousand dollars. No, it was closer to a million. It was, it was actually eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of VE that we took. And then, when you run it through the multipliers, the, the fees that are based on the price of the project, it, it came out to over a million dollars. So, we did accept that level of, of VE. I can produce for you a complete list.
Well, excepted, just, if I might just...
Yeah, go ahead.
On seven-two, we were down at thirteen-five.
Correct.
And then we back up to fourteen-nine. So, we value engineered and then put more stuff in? How does that work?
The explanation there is we were at design development. As the documents got further developed to construction documents, we did another estimate, which yielded some additional growth in cost. The main things that increased at that point were, one, we ended up at a thirty-one hundred square foot cafeteria as opposed to three thousand.
No. Okay, thirty-one hundred square feet, for roughly five hundred students, a shift, a lunch?
That's just the addition. So, you have to add the entire, the existing cafeteria's square footage to that.
How much, it's five hundred kids, how much cafeteria square footage is there in total?
Nine plus three is about twelve square feet, not including the lounge.
How many square feet is that per student?
About fifteen point five per student.
That's when, when you edit out that square foot.
Remember, that's a gross number. So, you know, you've got to subtract, subtract from that, a little bit less square footage.
Okay. But just in round numbers, if it were ten thousand square feet and five hundred students, is that twenty feet per student? Wow. What's the, hit twelve, what'd you say, was fifteen thousand or twelve thousand?
Remember, the nine, the nine thousand I gave you included up the hallway as well.
Okay. What's the, what's the design number for that? That seems like huge.
Generally, for, for cafeterias, you assume around fifteen square foot per student per table.
Okay.
It's generally the number you use.
Wow. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And by the way, that, that overage that was, that was the square footage, it's because of structural line. We wanted to align with a consistent structure, that's where our cafeteria ended up.
It's shady as it was.
What, can I ask, was the lounge ever part of the value engineering discussion, in terms of that square footage? And how many square feet is that?
The lounge is always part of the renovation, because what, what's missing here is the renovation component. We've been focused on the additions and the expansion, but there are substantial renovations associated with this project, including the teacher, lunch area, student lounge, there was a storage area, and there was renovations to the former teacher lounge into a classroom. So, it's not just square footage, it's not just additions.
I see, it's the renovation of other pieces of it.
Exactly.
Right. Could you show us where the renovations are included in page Attachment Three? Because all we see is new construct, new construction renovation.
They're, they are in that...
That same big number?
That big number, yes.
So, I gotta, I gotta tell you, one, one big glitch with the schedule, there's all sorts of numbers in all sorts of columns, and they're all the same except one line, and we don't have any breakout of the numbers in that one line. Everything on this is all the same. We've got one line where the entire overage is, and we don't have any explanation or breakout or schedules to support that. So, as an analysis, guys, this doesn't do the job, simply put. It's kind of like looking at a whole bunch of details in a two-hundred-and-eighty million dollar budget and having fifty million under all other.
What, what we can do is we can take our, everything except the conceptual estimate, we can take the, the six-two estimate, the seven-two, the ten-eight, and actually the bid numbers, and give you a, a list by division and, and show you the comparison of the growth of those numbers.
Yeah. Is there any way to back those into, add those up and say, look, with all these real numbers this high, it's really three hundred dollars a square foot instead of two hundred dollars a square foot? But at some point, there were estimates used for the conceptual one that were blown, and, and whether those are not good estimates, or whether things were added in, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
The only way to learn anything is to take a look at what's normal and say, by the way, here are the things that are different, and when we add this up, somebody who did the conceptual stuff says, we picked two fifty a square foot because we assume these assumptions, or this is our, the architectural standard, because it makes these assumptions, in the same way that, you know, when you add a bedroom to a house, it's a three million dollar house that costs more than it's a five hundred thousand dollar house.
What, what makes that difficult is we have lump sum bids from the contractors. They, they didn't break it down by additions and renovations. So, the number that we have is a blended number. The, the construction cost of the additions and the renovations, at this point, based on the square footage we have, is about two hundred and seventy-eight dollars a square foot. Part of the problem is on the renovations, which were a significant square footage, we use numbers much less than that. So, you know, had we used two seventy across the entire project, you know, we, we wouldn't be here today.
No, probably because it wouldn't have gotten approved, but yeah.
So, I, I mean, the, the bid numbers equated to the, the square footage of the job that we have today is giving us a square footage of about two hundred and seventy-eight bucks a foot, two hundred and eighty.
If, if I read this chart correctly, we've got eight thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet at two hundred and seventy-seven dollars a square foot for two point five million dollars. So, it looks like we did use that number across it.
Just, we use that just for the Webster Wing renovations, just the Webster Wing renovations. We use the lesser number for the cafeteria, for the reason that you stated, it's, it's basically a big empty box. We use the two forty-five per square foot number on the cafeteria. But the cafeteria renovations, the, the numbers that we used were significantly less, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five dollars a square foot.
Which again, comes back to the fact that it's the eight thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot at two seventy-seven, which is driving the whole difference, because everything else, when you add that and everything else up, it's three point six million, which is the number on here, three point six, that goes up to six million.
Right.
So, it's still kind of one line item. I get very uncomfortable with all the, the variances in one line item on a sheet and So, one of the original components we're given is the variance is in the structural design, the steel design, square footage for the cafeteria, the complexity, classroom square footage, and exterior. Still coming back to the, the support for that on all this. I guess the, the two things I'm coming back to is, is I just need...
Break down the detail of that one major line item with all of the increases.
This lays out a lot, and this, you know, once you step us through it, is helpful in terms of going through it, but it still comes back to one big number, which is where all the variance is, and that's normally what you like to see broken out.
And that's where the questions are to come from, from many of the other boards as well.
So, I guess as one item, would like to see some attempt at breaking that out a better to show, help step us through what happened with that item and what drove that change. to show, help step us through what happened with that item and what drove that change. Because the more we talk through this, it seems like we talk through some of the, the rumors, the, the choice of architects and the design, the soft costs, you keep coming back to that one number. And I think that's, at least in from our standpoint, important to understand as we, as we try and learn from this project and move on to others. It also, given how these numbers have bounced around, I think would help raise, I don't mean to, certainly would raise my confidence factor, if not our confidence factor, but what we have left to do is there, because if we don't hit the numbers as they are before us, we will not hit September. Because there's, you know, getting an increase in funding for Phase 1 and Phase 2, with the amount of question that would go on, it will take at least a couple months to get through the approval process. So these have got to be good. So helping us understand what's driving that variance on that construction piece, which is the most complicated part, and it has been, my understanding, traditionally, that is where a lot of the contingency gets used up in that construction phase? Is that fair, or is that?
Yes.
That's a yes? Okay. So, I think, hopefully that helps you understand the concern from this side in terms of where we are. Kevin?
I would like to see the breakout of, somebody mentioned there was a log of the value engineering, and I just want to see the discussion and, and where you went and where you came back from, and what that process was. And the other thing that I'd really like to hear from you, and we touched upon it today, because we do need to understand how this process works, or how we can improve upon it, really moving forward, is what your suggestions are, where, where we could improve the process. I mean, when was the red flag raised? When you discussed this with the administration, the Board of Ed, you know, do we need to hear from you sooner in the process? Do, is there some oversight that would come in and help us through this process? I mean, from my perspective, again, it's about that confidence in the numbers, when we're asked to approve a budget, how can we become more confident, or how can we kind of get ahead of this process, or these costs, before they take off on us and there's no going back? So that's a real concern for me. I'd really like to hear your perspective on how this might have been handled differently, or how we can address some of these concerns with other projects.
I think, and, just to be clear, Mr. Donald, I sat down in July, end of July, maybe?
Yes.
Were this, in actual time, Riverfield was in, in that situation, and another project going on. So we sat down at that point, and this was originally identified, and I think if you look on here, I think it was either the 6.2 or 7.2 numbers we were looking at at that point. We identified two paths. One is to go back and value engineer, to the extent we can, but also go back and look at, is there anything we can get on the specs? And is, do we need to change the spec? Do we need to go back to the Board of Ed and get that changed?
Right.
I think that's what you worked on for the latter part of the summer. At the capital planning workshop, I was actually expecting to hear part of the update on that, but came back at that point was the original bid number of 11.6. So I sat down with Sal, Mr. Marbido, and Twig, and like the first week in October or thereabouts, to look at what this number really was. I think Sal, was it, is there a $17 million number at that point?
There was a, the spreadsheet that was supplied to you at that time, yes, had a $17 million number, and it was incorrect, because there was mathematical errors in the spreadsheet that was developed. It was a, the wrong file got sent. It was at the 14-ish number, but that created a great, great concern, and that's what prompted Mr. Donald's October update to this board.
So, and just to point out, that we then had an update in October as to where we were.
Okay.
And at that point, given where they were, the only option was either miss the September date, based on the schedule of going out to bid, getting things back in, and getting construction going, given the winter and everything else, or go to the Board of Ed and get the ed spec changed, to make the windows and add alternate.
Okay.
And so that's what happened in, Mr. Donald, in November, you went to the Board of Ed?
Yes, 23rd of November.
Okay, so towards the end of November, that got done, and there were also some bids coming back at the same time, with, at least at that point, some hope that the numbers might be less than what we're looking at, which obviously didn't happen from that standpoint. So with that, they proceeded with Phase 1 and Phase 2, proceeding with the roof and proceeding with this. Twig Holland pointed out that without that change in the ed spec, we could not approve the project as the town's purchasing authority. So the project in November was dead in the water until that ed spec was changed.
Okay.
All right, and that's where backing up against the September deadline for getting students in the classes. As late as November, that wasn't going to happen unless something changed, because this project at that point, despite everything else, was still considerably over budget. All right. Juan, thank you for putting all this together. We've been here for a while, and I think it's time to let you guys go, and I would like to see that breakout, some analysis back before this board on that one line item. It just, that's too big a number with too much. There's got to be a way to explain that, so it makes sense, so we can understand what took place. And not, again, not as an attempt to, to blame anybody from that standpoint, but we've got to understand what, what happened with that, from, I think, at two levels. One, to establish some credibility that the 11.6, that we have a shot at the 11.6 number. Because if we don't, that's a whole nother issue. All right, all this work goes for naught, because there's, if we're not going to hit that 11.6, we're not getting done in September. So we need some credibility on that. I think you want that also, but we certainly need that. And then the second piece is, so we can understand what happened here when we apply it to future projects. Because this is not the last renovation that's going to come before us, and I think there's a certain educational opportunity with that. Sheila, unless you have anything to add?
No, thanks for all the hard work in putting this together.
Can I just add two things? So Donald, if you can take a look at those two and see when it might make sense to come back. I'm going to just sooner rather than later, but I don't, but I'd prefer you come back to us and let us know when you're comfortable.
Okay.
Coming back with that. And then second, that also buys us some time, just kind of sift through this a little bit and see if, if there's anything else, but, because we covered a lot of ground, some of it more than once, and thank you for your patience in taking us through that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If we can get back on the schedule here. Oh, yeah. All right. All right, do we have tax refunds? Do you have a number for those?
Yeah. Okay. So, Mr. Sled, First Sledman, I'm going to make an amendment to remove.
Let's, let's move the item first.
Okay.
So, item 10 on our agenda is to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second. Any discussion or amendments?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to remove the period at the end of the sentence and add a comma, followed by 15,374 and 21 cents.
All right, that's the motion to amend. I'll second that. The motion is amended as before, so any further discussion?
Yes.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. That's done. To hear, consider and act upon any other communications, there are none before us. To hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall properly come before this meeting. There's none that I know of. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, oh, all in favor of the adjournment? Here, here.